We reconvene in hearing for the Champion compressor station. I think when we left off, Ms. Bersick had her last witness, had the last witness on the stand. So I will ask Ms. Bersick if she wants to proceed with her case at this time.
No.
Have you included your case in chief?
No.
Okay. Ms. Lucas, this is a little unconventional, so are you, do you intend to present your own testimony that at the end? Is that how you are proposing to do this?
Gordon Johnson is being told as a witness. Miles Janey.
Okay.
So he said on, this is his third time meeting on Zoom, waiting to be, waiting to testify. So, or, you know, so he didn't agree with that and continue with that. And she heard her witness.
Ms. Lucas, any objection to that?
No.
Okay. Ms. Roslin, you want to present your witness then?
I, I thought that Eileen was going to go first. Yes, Eileen's going first. Yes, and she adds, it's first in line each time.
Okay, Ms. Lucas, any objection to that?
No.
Okay. Ms. Smith, you may proceed.
I'd like to call my first witness Pat Kilkary.
Make yourself a name.
P A T, last name Kilkary, K I L, K E A R Y.
Come on up, sir.
Correct.
Uh, you're gonna get sworn in first, so you can come on up here and they'll give you a mic.
Just so I can hear it.
Okay.
Um, Richard Reddinger, for me, please, do you swear the testimony you're about to give to the compressor company? The company, thank you.
Here, right up here, right?
Just make sure you face the...
Yeah, you did.
Face, sir.
Oh.
Yeah, the mic's more for the court reporter, sir, just so she can hear you.
Okay.
And the people in the office, talking.
Um, can you state your name for the record?
Patrick Jankowski.
Can you go over your education?
And...
You told that mic.
Pull the mic out and kind of stand right here and look at me and look at her. Everybody's perfect.
All right. High school, through 12th grade, pressure program, four years of pressure program, forty-four years in student.
Forty-four years?
In student. Student for the local 4-4 now, high school.
Excuse me, at this point, can you see an offer of proof in respect to whether this is a fact witness, a resident, uh, expert witness? And if so, it was just an expert witness, a fact witness and an expert witness?
Let me hear everybody use the mic, please. Hold on, wait, one at a time, please. Microphone. Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, you're not, you're not a witness, are you? Ms. Smiths, can you, she's asking for an offer of proof, can you say what the offer of proof, proof is in terms of this witness? Is it a fact witness or an expert witness?
His resume, most people's help. He's been a senior for three years.
Right, I would go off, and that is expert witness, in what? Does he has, he has businesses, he has constructed compressor sites, built them? So I understand he's being offered as an expert witness in building construction of compressor stations?
Yes.
In operations, okay. Um, I, I had understood that expert witnesses were to be identified, and although Mr. Johnson, who I believe is gonna participate in that Zoom, was identified, um, there was something about this expert testifying, or any expert testifying about compressor stations in construction or operations.
Ms. Smiths, response?
With all due respect, it's my regret, as an observer, to present my case, as I see fit, including any and all witnesses. To my knowledge, there are no roles or statues in the state of Pennsylvania that requires me to give office system, counsel, or the board a witness list or confidence of the testimony prior to presenting my case. In fact, the municipalities' land code states in section 908, or the C6 of the municipality's planning code, that formal rules of evidence shall not apply in proceedings such as this. I would like to state for record that I am unaware that as an objector, any rules to, as to when I would need to ensure my witnesses' schedule.
Ms. Condon?
Well, it's my understanding that, um, the board can set procedural guidelines of these proceedings, and I think now there's two opportunities, because I understand that for identifications at the board's request of experts. Was it even necessary for reports, but for some general description of the expert?
I'm gonna let this witness move forward, only because it's, these are pro se, uh, arguments, and I, I don't know if there was confusion on whether this is expert, even when they were standing here, as whether he was expert or fact witness, I'm not sure they, did they exactly know. So I'm gonna let her proceed with this witness, and we'll see where it goes. Give you the opportunity to object later on, if necessary. Go ahead, Ms. Smiths.
Thank you. If I recite your name, can you go over your education, you already did that. Can you go over your qualifications to speak on compressor stations?
We'll be in the judging division for this long, compressor sites, I think, often, I'll go back in my book here, twenty or better, that's build and construction, supervised, and operating, and startup.
Are you with my compliments, I...
Is it going?
Thank you.
It told me we're the fact that it... Come on.
Who was your employer?
Uh, multiple employers, and that would be, uh, McCarroll's Inc., and McCamish Inc.
What was your position?
Subgrader, woman, and worker, and...
How long have you worked in this industry?
Forty-four years.
How many compressor stations have you worked on?
A little better than twenty.
How many?
Twenty.
And a little better than how many?
I'm sorry.
There we go.
Can you tell us again, how many years of experience you have in this field?
Forty-four. I just retired, virgin here.
Okay, can I have exhibit A dash four, page two, on the screen, please?
If this though relates to qualifications, that's fine, but if we're moving to something that has the money, I would recommend for a year, he needs to be qualified for it.
I'm asking questions about the...
Are you asking him to be admitted as an expert this time?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Condon, any objection to that?
Uh, I don't think you got some qualifications for it here.
Go ahead.
Um, you are a steamfitter, correct?
Yes, I am.
And so when you say you've worked for forty-four years in this industry, you mean a steamfitter?
Yes, right.
And, um, I've been looking here a little bit at your C B, and, um, you worked for a pipe and general foreman from 2019 to 2020 at Presbyterian Hospital. Would he say, you say that wasn't a compressor station job?
A decent position.
And then you've worked, um, in 2019 as a pipe and general foreman at the, uh, Houston Chemicals, the NACED facility. That was not a oil and gas compressor station, correct?
Yes, it was, that's where it ends, all this gas ends here.
Right, but there's...
It's not a compressor site, just...
It's not a compressor.
I agree.
Okay. And then you worked for five years for McCamish, from 2014 to 2019, as a pipe and general foreman. You worked for, like, says, for admin, says corporations, new process piping for glass line mixer vessel, that's not a oil and gas compressor station, correct? You worked at US Steel plant works, I think you can agree, that's not a oil and gas compressor station, correct?
Water compressors, it's not a compressor site.
That's not a real gas compressor station.
Right.
Uh, you worked at Alanyewell, the Braxton Bridge facility, uh, on a building for a street build, that's not a oil and gas compressor station, correct?
Correct.
You worked, uh, at Alanyewell, the Lomubers, and gas and air piping, uh, not more than gas compressor stations. Uh, for another job at Land SaaS, that's saying you process piping, uh, how, how long have you worked as an after foreman? Uh, that's not a oil and gas compressor station site, correct? Is that correct?
Yes, right.
Uh, you worked, uh, I don't, you know, for Liberty Gas, I think you know all from McCamish, but at Liberty Gas, Marcella Shell compressor Station, installing a storage tank, is that correct?
It's multiple places, yes, that's one, a storage tank or a compressor sites.
Okay, so when you say Marcella Shell compressor Station, what was the name of that compressor station, or was it located?
Fifteen of them in Washington County. You wanted to name the names, I don't know if I can get them all.
Did you?
Regis Johnson, Fulton, Regress, Weatherford, the main site. I don't know all their names.
So with respect to each of those sites, um, did you work on different things, or were you always working on storage tanks?
No, compressor themselves, the whole site.
Yes, and when you say the whole site, though, what was your work, pretend you were a job, or were you...
Superintendent.
Okay, and what, oh, what...
Sorry, what was the response?
There is superintendent.
Superintendent?
Yes.
And during the time you were superintendent for compressor station jobs in Washington County, first of all, what time period did you have to stand at Washington County for?
I'd have to hope that they're...
You had it listed under your McCamish pipe and general foreman?
You gotta go back to McCarroll's, you'll see McCarroll's on it also.
Okay, well, let's just say, we'll get to McCarroll's, from McCamish, um, it says 2014 to 2019.
Mm-hmm.
And that includes all these jobs, just whatever...
Like, the two, two years where the compressor sites.
Okay, and then again, two years?
The two years where on compressor sites.
And what was your, you were superintendent of piping, of steamfitters piping, correct?
To build the whole thing, we were general, overall.
When you say you built the whole thing, I want, I want to know is, there were other trades there, not just steamfitters, whatever, right? What were the other trades?
Cow workers, mill rights, carpenters, plumbers, steamfitters, of course, and, uh... Okay, instrumentation guys, pretty much something.
And what was your specific key doing, as contrast of all those other disciplines? Well, you were a peddle please, to be respectful, but you weren't doing all of it because all those other trades were obviously...
I overseen all the trades.
So as a steamfitter superintendent, you were in charge of all the union trades, not just steamfitters?
On that site in particular, yes.
And who did you take direction from in terms of the, the design, how did you get the drawings or the whiteboard?
They were from Mark West.
So you were working, uh...
For Mark, we were contracted for Mark West.
Okay. And then during the same five year period, you also worked, uh, out at the Shell facility, you said during some early works project, correct?
Mm-hmm.
During that five year period, you also worked for Rush Aftermarket Corporation, uh, on turbine shaft balancing systems, correct? And then during that five year period, you also worked at that state department, AK Steel, in the HOGA factory, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, so other than the Washington County Mark West compressor stations, and you made a few of, you said you think they total fifteen, um, did you work at any other compressor station sites?
Rice Energy, right down the street right there.
And...
Two compressors, and I do not know, we got a name of the site, right over the other.
And what were, um, what was your role on...
To install a compressor, to pipe it, tools to power it.
And was that from McCarroll's or from McCamish?
Yeah, it was from McCarroll's.
And, uh, during that time, you worked for McCarroll's, it looks like it was 2008 to 2012, you also worked at Will Pitt, Bingo Junction, US Steel at your Thompson, Easton Chemical, US Steel again, uh, US Steel Urban, Virginia Power, AK Steel, and...
Virginia Power, that's Power, that's not McCarroll's.
Okay, Virginia Power then was for, uh, a different, okay. Prior to 2018, when you started, I'm sorry, 2008, we started working for McCarroll's, did you own a compressor station, oil and gas compressor station?
Yes, I did.
Before 2018?
Yes, I did.
Where was that?
That was for, uh, Jetland Corporation, in House of Water at the time, down all the sites in Washington.
So you, you were a laborer?
No, I was a state.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant you were not superintendent.
Exactly.
Uh, for that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And do you remember who you were working for?
Who know I do.
Have we now covered, uh, for compressor station, uh, construction work?
Not really, I don't think. You pinpointed everything I didn't do on the compressor sites, I understand that, but at the same time, with other patents here, there was a lot of compressors not written down, I did highlights. So there was a lot of things, not on that piece of paper, but take those to compressor sites.
So other than Mark West, Washington County compressor stations, and this one over the hill, for lights, do you remember any other compressor stations?
Did one and I, I cannot remember, that was years back.
And that was really gas?
Yes, it was.
Uh, after the compressor stations were constructed, any of these compressor stations, did you have any stuff involved with any of them after you left?
Startup and maintenance.
And, uh, so you did maintenance as a steamfitter?
Mm-hmm, follow-up shift.
Okay, and what aspect of compressor stations, just along here, do you, uh, intend to testify about as an expert? And what are the areas where you're subject to compressor station construction?
Well, the compressor itself.
How it works, or...
Uh, works, where it goes, how it's fed, uh, let's see, we go to the tanks, the overflow tanks, we did, I was, pig launchers, and we have the, uh, uh, the gas coming in, drawing the blank, uh, they collect the sludge, flood catchers, I'll try, there you go.
So you're gonna give us kind of a primer of compressor station equipment, is that...
If that's what you're hoping for, yes.
Okay, um, and with respect to compressor station, that with your amounts, my champion?
Mm-hmm.
Have you reviewed any information on the champion compressor station, to know what's gonna be involved with it?
I'm sure there's gonna be a couple, correct?
I'm asking what you're assuming, and asking if you reviewed any information about it.
I don't have that.
What did you...
Ms. Smiths, show me right there.
A drawing?
That's just a drawing.
A drawing? Yeah, well, painted on draws. Yes. I have all my draws that are painted on draws.
So at this point, I would have gen, I think it's hard to know exactly what the purpose of this testimony is, but as I understand it, at this point, you testified generally about compressor stations are built, and how they operate in different conditions there. I would object to that, and they have experience from other compressor stations about that, but, um, if he's gonna testify about the drawings of this compressor station, he has some special expertise in this area of that, I suppose we could hear that testimony, and I may object as a concept, but...
Yeah, I'm gonna admit it in terms of construction and maintenance, obviously, if he's testifying something that's different, for, because of the plans being different, I think he's, he's provided sufficient background that he can testify knowingly about construction and maintenance issues, and I'll allow you to cross-examine on anything on your specific plan, sir, so you may proceed, Ms. Smiths.
Okay, can I have the exhibit A dash four, page two, up on the screen, please? One second, here, can you go, or where am I? That's all.
Which part we're pointing this up?
That is, uh, A, four, those are, no, it's just from the application. On the, I just wanna point out the...
I don't have that.
Okay, well, he's gonna just go on clear.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a copy, can you show the applicant what you're looking at? Okay, will you go off for a second? Do you, do you know what you're referring to, like, is that already within your...
You guys have...
It is.
It's important.
Do you have any, sure. I'm just saying that way, you don't have to, you don't have to readmit it, she can just reference it as part of the record. Right, and that makes it, I was thinking, um, we're not around here, um, definitely. That's okay, let's just, let's go back on. Hold on one second. Okay, great. Got it, Ms. Smiths.
Pat, go through each piece of equipment, what it does, what the dangers are, close proximity.
When you got, um, I don't know, you needed to speak, like, um, immediately.
I will.
At this point, I don't have a problem with him, to the extent he's familiar with the equipment and can read the drawing, tells what the equipment is, but I don't think this witness is in a position to tell us about what the dangers are of each piece of equipment from being near it.
Yeah, can you, I think you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sustain that objection, um, I think you need, can you break that out to a little bit? Couple more questions, like, ask him about one piece, and then kind of ask those questions, and then go on to the next piece, instead of just walking generally.
Start from the beginning, Pat.
What I'll do, if you're okay with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the piece of pipe coming out of the ground. Now, I'm looking to the strong, that would be the, uh, west side of the facility. You all agree on that? That's a piece coming in. That there's gonna have a valve there, in a proper event. You all agree with that?
Well, at this point, I don't know, so he played the witness that people can't answer his question about whether we all agree to it, and again, just so...
I'm just wanting to show, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, just so I'm, I'm clear, I don't have a problem, particularly relative, I don't have a problem with him walking through the drawing, but again, just so we're all clear, my objection is, to the extent he's gonna start talking about what he perceives to be dangers from being near, or...
I understand, and you obviously have the opportunity to cross-examine. Sir, yeah, you're the witness, so no one's gonna respond to you, you're the, I'm the one that's answering the questions, so just answer the best of your ability.
All right, then, we'll just go to the compressor, the building itself, you got two compressor states right there. Compressors inside the building, condensers outside the building, that's fine. Now, the condensers, they're noisy as ever, it looks like there's only one fan per, that's very noisy, diolatic glycol in that, that's your point.
At this point, I don't think that he's played a foundation for knowing that the condensers of this particular compressor station are what noisy is all the time, I don't think, any foundation...
I had, I'm gonna overlook the objection, I think you could cross-examine on what does that mean, what is noisy to him? I think he's giving his own opinion, he thinks they're noisy, so you could sort of cross-examine that. Go ahead.
With all due respect, Olympus witness had a very narrow and limited testimony on the operations of this compressor station, and was not accurate, and could not answer the questions I had for him, so I must present my own witness to do so.
Yes, that's, I already won in your favor, so...
Thank you.
All right, this is my opinion, being at these sites, this is one of the, the compressor themselves, they are very noisy, mainly the engine. So, and we'll just keep on moving, make it, and we're gonna go to the storage tanks, the storage tanks, I'm sure they have glycol in, and water, and gas, and that fumes, et cetera, et cetera. We're gonna keep on moving through the backup, the backup generator, backup generator, I don't know what's, what's running off. The ones I've been on, it's running off natural gas, the gas coming out of the ground. Now, you're gonna go to the inlet separators, I'm sure, we all heard about the pig launchers, they are very, very dangerous, and they are very, very smelly. And they normally, if you don't do the right work, you can leak all of that gas and that sludge to the ground, or a tote, or a truck. That pretty much sums up what I think what you're looking for.
What is the glyco storage?
Your glyco storage, on this setup, I'm assuming, I'm assuming, look at that drawing, that's gonna be the storage for the coolant, for the compressor, condenser, and the engine.
Are there odors associated with that?
Yes, there is.
Now, the pig launchers, what are those, and what are the dangers associated with them?
The pig launcher is where that gas comes in, the pig cleans the lines from, well, wherever it's coming from, to the compressor site. That is very dangerous, because probably ran it about nine hundred PSI as it hits that pig launcher. Now, to get that pig out, you have to vent it, drain it, then open up the pig launcher, and hopefully nothing spills on the ground or in a tote.
Now, we just went through the various stages of the compressor station, and just to recap, what in the compressor station is flammable or could be explosive?
Pig launcher, the compressor, storage tanks, can that bounce?
Which components are most likely to fail, and how fast can that happen?
I, I can kind of give you wider away, but I have to check with this, uh, with what, what could most likely fail, and how quickly? Not that there's no foundation, that's a perspective, this, any compressor station, well, it's easy, it's easy to...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna overrule the objection, but Ms. Smiths, remember, he's admitted for an expert in construction and maintenance of compressor sites, so just, if you can, do your best to try and come to the general, that's the area of the case.
Okay. Uh, the, like, the valves, you have your valves?
Valves, yeah. And depending on, if it's new equipment, very, very good, refurbished, so, so, this is my opinion, now, if it's used, I'd be nervous. The valves are the main things, the valves, any kind of vibration, I've seen it in the past, my experience, they will crack if they're not anchored properly, or installed properly.
What is the life expect, expectancy of the major equipment?
That's the same thing, I mean, it's, it's, it has, what, new, used, refurbished, it, it's, they're...
So we really don't know if the compressor is...
You really don't, I mean, if it's a brave room, anything can happen, but there's no guarantees, I don't know if your compressors are tested before you bring them out, I'm not sure. Do you run a drive-by on them, I don't know.
Is it okay, Brody answers that question?
No, not right now, I mean, I can call him if you want.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, normally, I've seen them tested, and tested a lot, what's your normal procedure, before you put the gas in, that's the best procedure.
But you can have a used one that has already been used on another site and brought over to that site.
I've seen that happening, yes.
Where can spills, drips, or leaks most likely happen?
Anywhere on that site. And what the tanks, they're on flames, they got a doorway that's all gold, the condensers, compressors, pig launchers.
Okay, the applicant says the plan is to have the pad itself as gravel, can you tell us why that would be a bad idea?
This is my opinion, once I've done, uncompletely, never had a problem, and once I've done on gravel, they vibrate, and they start walking, and there's no anchor, and they're mud-fitting in the systems. And vibration, because it's not anchored anywhere.
Olympus witness states that they don't anticipate any oil or liquids to spill onto the gravel ground, in your experience... In your experience, do you agree with that?
No, I don't. I mean, accidents happen, I've seen it with very good people from the operations, and accidents happen. I'm hoping nothing happens, but they do happen.
The applicant also states in their testimony that they have moved from a design with three compressors down to two, with no intentions at this time of a third. Can you tell me, if you can fit a third compressor there with this design?
Looking at that drawing, yeah, absolutely, you can put another compressor here.
Can you tell me, if two compressors will, will be all they need to serve as two well sites from this location?
At this point, we are well beyond expertise in construction, operation, maintenance.
Yeah, I, I agree, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sustain that objection.
Okay, I need this Olympus Exhibit B, page six.
I wanna show the applicant what you have to do.
Can you tell me on this map, what this yellow area is by the road? It'll be a lower part down here.
No, I can't, the one that states end wall, I have no idea what that is, I've never seen that before.
What is the end wall runoff facing for?
You'd have to ask the designer. The runoff I know, it's a basin.
I was checking, I said it doesn't know what that is, so you have to ask-
On that drawing.
And now, saying, wait, that's what it is?
On that drawing, right there is what I said.
Yeah, I'll, I'll overrule the objection, go ahead, just-
Right there, and I meant that drawing, I have no idea, it doesn't tell you very much on that drawing, where it goes.
So, it's a runoff-
If I'm being, I'd ask where it goes.
It's a runoff of the lane, right there, and it's going down there, and that's it.
I'd have to ask the question to whomever, where is the end user, does it go to the sanitary, does it go to the storm, or just, where's it go? Looking at that drawing.
Maybe you have a question I need to ask, Brody, thank you. In your years of experience, have you ever seen a compressor station this close to homes before?
Yes, I have. Can I, I, we're going up?
Please do.
Am I out? Pretty much the same from your house to where you're building, doing. I've talked to the people, they regret not leaving.
Objection here, sir.
Sustained.
Anyways, okay.
Okay, can you tell me about the noise a compressor station makes?
Quite a bit, quite a bit, on doing twenty-four hours a day, yes, it's quite a bit. It's happened, I, I do property inspection, but I'm gonna say it anyways, seven, like a Mack truck parked in your driveway all day long.
When and if any of the equipment spills from fatigue or vibrations, how far will the impact be?
Let me see if I can get it. I've seen, with my own eyes, parts that have exploded on the compressor, in a couple of pieces, it would have fifteen thousand foot wide.
Have you ever worked on a compressor station that had caught fire?
Yes, I have.
Have you seen the site in person? Were you really going to play?
Yes, I have.
Have you observed activity there, such as a current pipeline there?
What kind of pipeline?
Pipeline, a current pipeline there.
Yes, I have, it's right up, right down the road underground, yes.
And is there currently active, activity that's there?
A lot of there's no safety period, no pressure, none of that.
Does the current activity have man security?
At this point, I, we're well outside the construction, other than operations, construction.
There is a pipe coming out of the ground-
Apparently testifying that he observed something at a site in the head.
I believe he's saying he's testifying that he observed something at this particular site related to the construction, which is a pipe sticking out of the ground, I think she's gonna ask him about that later.
It's, it's, okay.
So, your objection's over, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, and last, can you tell me about the access roads, and to your knowledge, can those be built anywhere?
Oh, sure, I've seen it, they're over mountains, as part of construction, it really is. The reason I say that, we've brought the pressures through these access roads throughout all Washington County, yes.
Can you tell me about some of the slopes of the access roads you have been on?
Some perfectly straight, some are extremely, forty-five to here or better. It's very difficult to wear your compressor site, or the one you're looking at, pretty easy, I'd be thankful for that one.
And again, you have seen the site, correct?
Yes, I have.
Can you tell me if you believe access could be built from Round Hill Road?
Oh, sure it could, keep it off the main drag, absolutely.
That concludes-
Ms. Connaught, your witness.
Are you being compensated for, as an expert, for your testimony to see?
Absolutely not.
And, um, can you tell us who requested that you testified?
I think, Ms. Miskovich.
Um, the testimony you've given about, uh, your perceptions from your experience of dangers of compressor stations, um, are those typical dangers that you've seen with compressor stations that you've worked at?
No, no, absolutely not.
So, some-
But they can occur, to your actual, or no.
So, sometimes you've seen those dangers at some compressor stations and sometimes you haven't?
That's correct.
And you've not testified to anything about the plans that you saw here, that in your mind, make this compressor station proposal more or less dangerous than some of these other ones that you, where you should be-
Pretty clearly, my main concern for this compressor site you've got right there, is how close it is to that roadway right there, and equal to ours. I'm not, I'm not breaking it, it's gonna happen, I get it, my concern is, is the roadway itself, I don't know what that road is, it's not Round Hill, what's the other road?
Round Hill Road on Douglas.
Douglas Road, I'm talking about Douglas Road, that is extremely close to Douglas Road, that can't be no more than, a few feet off that Center Road, and the stream across the street, no more than about fifty feet, that concerns me, I mean, I, I don't live here, but I've seen them close, but never, ever that close one road, ever.
Uh, and are you familiar with the ordinance requirements with respect to deciding the compressor station with the time shift?
Not at all.
Um, the facilities that you've described, the, the compressors, the storage tanks, the inlet separators, the pig launchers, um, those, as, as I understood your testimony, are, are equipment that you are typically needed at compressor stations, correct?
The main, yes, not often, there's other components, there's components outside.
And-
I mean, you got a reboil, you have a boiler there, reboil, you have a control system, a shutdown system, a startup system, there's multiple different things, but they were only the main components.
And those components, well, the main ones and those ones that you've identified now, are components or equipment that are generally going to be at a compressor station, so?
Oh, sure.
You are familiar, I assume, from your work over the years installing compressor stations, that there's different manufacturers and different models and, and different upgrades to, uh, the actual engines, correct?
Yes, that there's new software, and I even asked, I mean, one time, they, I've even put in the electric ones, and they're pretty nice.
Um, did you look at what particular type of engine, of model, or type is going to go into this?
It's a cat, I don't know, I'm remembering right offhand.
And, um, do you know anything about whether, I think you indicated, but I just wanna confirm, you don't know if any of this equipment going in is gonna be used?
No, hopefully it's all gonna be branded.
Have you had different experiences at different compressor stations where you've worked in terms of how frequently equipment fails and what equipment fails, what maintenance required, what maintenance is required?
Well, I've seen the engines fail, I've seen the compressors fail, I've seen valves fail. Maintenance, the people I've worked with in the past, their operators normally are there lots of days to check on a compressor. I understand this would be an unmanned compressor. I'm assuming that's what I was told, yeah, so hopefully, the technicians slash operator could be there once or twice a day.
Um, you mentioned that you can have valves that will crack, I think you said if they're not installed properly, correct?
And fatigue, uh-huh.
And you don't have any reason to believe that any of the equipment here, well, on the valves, are not gonna be installed properly at this compressor station, do you?
I can, I can answer that.
You just don't have a one brand yet.
I'm gonna go ahead and say that.
You indicated that, as I understood your testimony, one of the reasons that you're claiming that there could be spills here at this compressor station because in your work, accidents happen, correct?
That's correct.
And again, you don't have any special knowledge or information about any of the practices and procedures that are or aren't going to be in place here at this compressor station that's gonna lead it to be more or less prone to an accident or a leak or spill, correct?
The ones I've worked on, they're, they're, and, and with the DOD, they got strict regulations on whether they have changed in the last two, two or three years, but I know, they got the DOD with strict regulations.
Uh, you're, you're aware that compressor stations are regulated by various entities, including the Department of Guard and protections, correct?
Yeah.
I'll make further questions with you.
Ms. Miskovich, Ms. Miskovich. We're good with baseball now, now. Um, Ms. Rossum, I mean, are you guys treating this witness as a combined witness, or do you have questions for this witness?
I think you have a question, by May.
Yeah.
Um, this has always perplexed me in this eight-word, eight-word drawing, on the southwest side, there's this little item called a vent silencer, and I finally got it, I think through my head is, when you had, if you were to have to shut down the compressors for some, I suppose, either an emergency or possibly, uh, you know, maintenance, like, work, yeah, um, if you've got gas in the compressor, if you had to release it, is, does it come out this vent over here?
Yes.
Okay, um, how does it get there? I see no pathway.
Well, there's, there's no piping draws right there, but it'll come off of the main gas lines, from the compressor.
So, is it, is it like vent into this underground part?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm assuming all your pipe, this compressor site is all about ground excess, the piping coming from the, uh-
Okay.
The valve itself.
Thank you.
The valve.
Valve itself.
Would, would be from the, uh, the valve itself.
Thank you.
Um, is Bersig, any questions for this witness?
No.
Uh, commissioners, any questions for this witness?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So, all the, um, compressor stations that you've done, um, this one is designed, the compressor's inside the building, is that typical, that's what you've worked on?
That's typical.
So, when you said that they're loud, are they loud within, without, or both?
Both.
Okay, do you explain that a little more?
Well, sure, like I, like I said earlier, it's a, it's a Mack truck parked in your driveway. Now, it also has exhaust and silencer and a muckler on that, that engine, it's pretty big, it's pretty loud. And the fans on these condensers, I don't know the size of the condensers, it looks like it's pretty substantial, those fins are probably eight-foot diapers, maybe six, it's pretty loud.
So, the ones that you've worked on, how many compressors were housed in, at those areas?
Four, four. Yeah, I did four, four, two and three, and I'm sorry, I did one, but it had eight. They were electric.
Okay, and going back to the, when you had said about being on concrete opposed to gravel?
Concrete diapers, the compressor, certainly that's not-
How far does that concrete typically get poured down to anchor?
Five foot. A five-foot pad, the ones I've set, they'd be five foot deep, fifteen foot wide, twenty-two foot long.
Any other questions for commissioners? Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Miskovich, my understanding that was your one witness for this evening.
Yes.
Ms. Rossum? You're up.
Can I do my case in chief?
I'm gonna give everybody an opportunity at the end to, to do a summary or a, or a testimony, I mean, unless, Mr. Litt, if you wanted to do this now? That's what I thought, in case someone's gonna address something in your, in your closing that comes up, I just thought that might be better for, for everybody, is that okay?
Yeah, I have everything ready.
Okay.
So, unmute, Jim, unmute?
Say what?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Oh, yes, um, good.
Have I been to see you or, or?
I can see, uh, is it just a moment here to get you sworn in? From afar. Is that good? Would you be swearing him in?
Yeah.
Or from?
Test, just in your part of here.
Oh, yes.
Sir, can you, can you just give a testing, one, two, three, so that the court reporter can make sure she can hear you?
Yes, one, two, three, test, one, two, three. Is that good? Can you get that up? Up a little bit, sir?
That's all I can do, is that all the way up? You put a mic in front of it?
Mic in front of it.
Sir, one more time, do a test, one, two, three, for me?
Test, one, two, three, test, one, two, three.
Much better, okay, perfect.
I'm Gordon Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, on the court reporter, can you raise your hand please? I'll swear you in. You swear the test ready, or about to?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson-
Mr. Johnson, can you state your name for the record, please?
Gordon Johnson.
And can you go over your educational background, please?
Yes, I have a bachelor of flight science engineering degree in geological sciences from the University of British Columbia. And I have a master of flight science degree from the University of California at Berkeley in civil engineering specializing in earth sciences.
Let's talk, if we could, a little bit about your experience. Who is your employer?
My employer is Burgess Environmental. That's essentially a sole proprietorship, so my company.
Okay, and how long have you been employed thereby?
I've been working on a continuous basis since 2016, but the company's been in existence since 2009.
And where were you employed prior to this?
I was managing director of Essentia Owens Global Geoscience and Water Resources Group. That included about sixteen hundred professionals in probably about forty countries worldwide. Before that, I worked as the director of customer sector group in infrastructure and environment for Worley Parsons, that's a large international engineering company. And there were thirty-six hundred people in the infrastructure and geoscience environmental group for Worley Parsons. Before that, I was managing director for a private company called Comex International. And we employed about four hundred and fifty people in the United States, Canada and UK.
For this construction of this compressor station, what would be your relevant, most relevant experience?
It's geotechnical assessments and hydrotechnical assessments and in general environmental site assessments of oil and gas facilities.
And lastly, have you ever testified as an expert witness before?
Yes, I have.
I would like to ask the board to recognize Mr. Gordon Johnson as an expert in engineering, specializing in geosciences and water resources.
Is there any objection?
I don't think the objection is qualified in that area. There are the rights, that's why it's examined, obviously, and to object depending on the substance and testimony, how it relates.
Certainly, it'll be admitted.
Okay, just let me hand off to the attorney on the body, please.
Yeah, Paul. Is this our first? I feel like she has another one.
She has one prior. Yeah.
It's, she's. Yeah, that was Ms. Smith.
So, Ross.
Oh, great, okay. So, it'll be admitted, Ross, let me free.
Thank you. I'm going to read a list of documents, and if you would, sir, please tell me yes or no if you've reviewed these as you prepared your report. Olympus Hyperion CEC application for conditional use.
I'm sorry, I, the sound wasn't very good there, but I believe you asked me if I'd prepared a report.
Oh, I was going to ask you if you had read this series of documents, I was going to enumerate them, see if you had reviewed them as, as part of your, as you prepared for your report.
I think it's going to work better, speak slowly because your words are going into my mouth.
I'm going to read a list of documents. Please tell me yes or no if you've reviewed these as you repaired, prepared your report.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I understand now.
Okay. The Olympus Hyperion CEC application for conditional use.
Yes, I did.
The Olympus Hyperion CEC application for a floodplain variance.
Yes, I did.
Okay. The Pennsylvania mine map atlas.
Yes, I did.
Mine, mine map atlas.
Mine map atlas.
Yes, I'm sorry. The Pennsylvania nineteen eighty-five geological survey.
Yes.
The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections twenty seventeen mine map of Allegheny County.
Yes, I did.
Assorted National Weather Service data.
Yes, I did. For the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay, thank you. Did any of the reports or application materials provide a reason for why this site was selected for the location of this compressor station?
Yes, as I understood the conditional use application, the site considered, or the proponentally considered sites that were zoned industrial, and the proposed site was selected because it was industrial zoned and it avoided steep terrain. That was my understanding, the other analysis, that it was limited to locations in Elizabeth County or Elizabeth Township sort that were zoned industrial.
To your knowledge, was any alternative site considered, as was recommended by the applicant's consultant CEC?
Other than what I just mentioned, no, I did not.
Okay. And did you also review the Pennsylvania Soil and Rock Incorporated November sixth twenty twenty geotechnical investigation of the proposed compressor site?
Yes, I did.
Did the geotechnical report identify any risks or areas of risks or other concerns about the construction of the proposed compressor station?
Yes, it primarily identified two risks. One was the materials being used to construct the fill that needs the compressor. They were proposing to use old mine waste, and they were concerned that that material, if it encountered water, could become dispersive and lose strength. And then it would be susceptible to erosion. That was one concern that they raised. And they also raised the concern that it was imposed proximity to an old surface mine that could cause local slope failures.
In your, in your professional opinion, do you agree with the geotechnical investigations, report findings?
Partly. The, I agree, I agree that the use of the old mine waste rock as fill presents a risk because it is potentially dispersive when it is encountered with water and it can lose strength. And I agree that the slope failure in the old mine waste is a potential risk. I think there are other risks that weren't acknowledged in the geotech report. They did a limited evaluation of the potential for mining beneath and around the facility. They concluded that the, because the Pittsburgh seam was higher than the ground that they were building on, that no mining existed. In my view, a more thorough analysis is warranted, given the seriousness of potential problems with the compressor. And their mitigation for the dispersive fill that they were using was solely aimed at preventing precipitation from entering into the foundation. They didn't consider flooding in the inundation, which would have the same and more serious effect than precipitation. So I partly agree, I thought those concerns shouldn't have taken further.
And so that would more or less constitute your professional recommendations? Would that be true, to investigate more thoroughly the mining situation and consider the fill?
Yes, I think a more detailed evaluation of the mining risks is warranted, some of the mining information that I was able to find and review who supported their position that the Pittsburgh seam wasn't present at that location, but some of it didn't support it, some of it, there is a map and a guide that illustrates, for example, that the area beneath that compressor was subjected to deep mining. Now, it's not possible for me to tell from those conflicting maps whether that occurred or not, but it's my view that a more in-depth evaluation can and should be done to evaluate those risks. If there's other risks associated with mining or is potential collapse should be investigated and analyzed, that's something that's fairly common in the area and identified as a concern. And the, the mitigation for the dispersive interior fills needs to consider the effects of that.
Could you repeat the last sentence and the mitigation for the disperses?
So, they were proposing to use mine waste as fill, and they identified it as being dispersive. I use the term mitigation, their protective measures should consider flooding, not just rainfall.
Now, did the conditional, so really the conditional use application materials, now, did they provide any data, they didn't, or did they provide any data or detailed analysis of the historic mining at this site or in this area? I lived there and it's under, the house I grew up under is on, so it concerns me.
So, the application narrative made acting reference to mining in the area. The geotechnical report did evaluate the elevation of the Pittsburgh seam, which is the primary seam, not the only seam mined in the, in the area. And in some of the supporting materials for the sediment and erosion control plan to state, they did provide a little bit more explanation, but no analysis. So it's possible to do more detailed analysis and investigation to see if these underground workings are present and not solely rely on old drawings.
In your expert opinion, could subsurface mining of that parcel affect the future stability and operations of the proposed compressor station?
Yes, I think the primary risk would be subsidence and basically caving in on the old underground workings, should they be present? And that would manifest itself as a collapse feature on the surface, and that clearly if it occurred beneath the compressor would be problematic. There are other risks, the geotechnical report mentioned slope stability, I agree. And there are also risks that have occurred in the area of some releases of water from underground mine openings. They flood over time and the pressure builds up and then that water can escape without warning. I believe that that occurred in the Douglas Run area, and there's an assessment of that that was done in the past.
If, if a compressor station, and you heard that it's, it's got two compressors scheduled to be installed, now, if they were constructed on, on that parcel, the flat section there between the hillside and Douglas Run Road, and it could have been part of subsurface mining, we don't know, but could the, the station itself and its operation perhaps cause the ground to shift or subside with the size, the weight, the, the motion, vibration, perhaps of, of the station itself? Could that be a contributing factor?
The weight of the compressor could be destabilizing and also the vibrations associated with compressing.
Would this, do you think this, this kind of subsidence that might be introduced shifts, could it affect neighboring properties, by which I mean not only Eileen's house, they're some nine hundred feet away, but the adjacent road even maybe?
Well, the subsidence risk would affect, potentially affect all surface structures. I, I think the consequence, potential consequence of it occurring underneath the compressor is more serious than a house, it could affect other residences, should have occurred in the event.
So, one more time, just generally speaking, what do the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection mining maps, documents that you acknowledged reviewing, say about this area of Allegheny County?
So, as I've mentioned before, they are conflicting. There's a map that I've referenced in my report and provided a copy of as a figure in my report that was prepared in nineteen eighty-five, and it shows that this area has been mined. It shows that there's an area of deep mining throughout the zone underneath the proposed compressor. And then there are other maps that show that the mining occurred to the north and to the south, but not on the compressor. So, they're conflicting and they should be evaluated further, in my opinion.
So based, really, on all the documentation that you have reviewed, what in your professional opinion about the potential risks of building on the site, what are those that, that have been subjected to historical mining?
Well, I think that the, in order of potential seriousness, the first issue would be the subsidence risk, the risk of caving in on the surface. The second would be slope failures associated with surface mining and old mines spoil. And then the third would be water releases. I think it disturbs additional analysis, particularly in this case, because of the technical consequences that are related with, to a compressor that aren't necessarily an issue with other structures, you know, compressors, oil and gas facilities. They don't fail very often, but when they do fail, they fail spectacularly and, and they put people's lives at risk, so it deserves special attention.
Thank you. Turning to the issue of design criteria, as you reviewed each of the documents submitted by the applicant to both the township and the PADP, is it your expert opinion that the design criteria were appropriate?
I can't answer that question yes or no because it's not clear to me what the design criteria were. It's clear to me that the site criteria involved analysis of the one and hundred year flood event, but that's not the same as a design criteria, and in my view, the facility, from the perspective of flooding, should be designed to a much more stringent standard, or, put it another way, a more, a less frequent event, a more extreme event. Because if the facility's in place for a long time, it's, it becomes more and more likely to experience a one and hundred year event, so. So although that criteria is used for saying things, in my view, it should not be used as criteria for designing them. And it wasn't clear what design criteria were used. There was only the model or the one and hundred year event, so I would assume that that's the criteria that would be used in design.
We've had a sound model, and now, as we turn to this part of the design of this installation, there was some modeling that was done regarding flood modeling, because this installation is not very, very far from a creek. And can you discuss your concerns with the flood modeling and how that was done?
Yeah, so I have three concerns about the modeling, and I'll try to put it in perspective, my understanding of what was done. So they looked at the flow, they assumed the flow that was calculated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to develop the FEMA maps. And then they, they used the local topography in the, in the floodway and in Gillespie Creek to model the elevation and flow velocities of that flood event. I have three concerns regarding the way they did the modeling. The first has to do with the base of the modeling, which was assuming the U.S. Army Corps flows. It's my understanding that those flows were determined based on climate data up until about nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-five, in the early nineteen seventies in that part of Pennsylvania. They updated the FEMA maps, but I'm not so sure that they updated the rainfall events and precipitation data that associated with them. Why is that important? It's important because in the Pittsburgh area, your three biggest storms on the record, and the record goes back more than a hundred years, the three biggest storms have occurred in the last twenty years. So they wouldn't have been in that U.S. Army Corps base of modeling. It's very possible that they've underestimated the flows during the one and hundred year event. The second is that they modeled only that stretch of Gillespie Run where the compressor is, and there's complicating factors that weren't included in their model. And those are the confluence, that confluences, where two streams join. Douglas Run joins in with Gillespie Run, just upstream of the compressor, and then just downstream of the proposed compressor site, it conflues with another unnamed drainage. And these are complicating factors that weren't addressed in the model, at least on the report, and I suspect not in the model, and they ought to have been. And, you know, the local residents will be dealt with a test to water going willy-nilly in all directions during these flood events. It's very difficult to predict floods and how severe they're going to be. We only have to watch the news from time to time, and what's happened in Pennsylvania in the last few years, but also what's happened this year in California. This stretch of river run is not going to be immune to that uncertainty. The last is that they used one-dimensional modeling. I think that the complicating factors and the need to calculate or estimate flow velocities for erosion protection, they ought to have used two-D modeling. So those are my three concerns. They, they could have underestimated precipitation, because they use old records, U.S. Army Corps did. The confluences of Douglas Run into Gillespie Run and the unnamed run into Gillespie Run weren't accounted for in the model, and they used the relatively simple one-D, and I believe the two-D is warranted.
Thank you. To be honest, I can't imagine two-D modeling of a stream. How does that work? What's the difference? Can you explain what's one-dimensional modeling versus two-dimensional?
One-dimensional modeling assumes that you understand the flow direction of the water course a hundred percent, and it relies on a series of cross-sections that show the ground surface at various stages through that section of creek that you're modeling. So it's assuming a one flow going through a series of cross-sections, and it interpolates and assumes various factors between those cross-sections. So it's a simple staged approach to looking at estimating flow velocities and flow heights through those cross-sections. A two-D uses basically the planned view of the topography in the drainage area as the base for the model, so it'll account for all of the peonies and flows and confluences that I would just mention.
Are you, okay, are you saying it basically is going to cover essentially the entire watershed, Gillespie Creek? Or is that?
It wouldn't account for the watershed. That's not quite the right way of looking at it, but you could, you could set the basis to look at all of the areas that are going to be influenced by these confluences. The watershed, right there.
Yeah, yeah, it's there. If you have, and this compressor station is designed to, the mechanics of the thing, the compressors and all that, that are sitting up on a built-up pad to get the whole operation up above the flood stage of the one-hundred-year flood, and I guess that, I'm not too sure, would that divert, like, if you did have a flood, would that possibly, I mean, there would be blocking part of the old flood plain, would it divert water into neighboring, you know, properties? Or?
So what happens when you construct something with earth and fill in a flood plain? Is it displaces water? The way to think about it is, if you put an empty pot into a sink full of water, that water in the sink comes up, because the pot displaces it. It's not quite as simple with a creek, because it's not constrained, like a sink is constrained. But by constructing, just build foundation for the compressor station, you're displacing places where water would otherwise be. So elevation of the water will increase, and because you're constricting the flow channel, the velocity of the water in the channel will increase. And typically, when you build something that has a beginning and an end to it, it will affect the turbulence and the flow. So that's the three ways it affects it, and it can affect the neighboring properties, depending on how close they are, by increasing the water level on those properties, increase in the flow velocities and the turbulence. And all of those things are bad, from the perspective of flood. Now, those effects will be relatively, they'll be experienced relatively close to the compressor.
Is there a, you know, one-to-one type correlation? Do you increase the velocity, then, does turbulence go up with it? Can you, can you, or could you not say that? That gets us a little bit.
Yes, there is a relationship between turbulence and flow velocity, for sure. And based on their modeling, they predicted velocities, I believe, of about twelve feet per second. You would expect to see turbulence at that flow velocity.
I just have watched the creek that goes past my house. The faster it runs, the more turbulence there is, and the bigger appetite it has to chew into everything. Now, in your, so, the water out, okay, so you're restricting somewhat the flow, you're speeding it up, you're crossing turb, you're raising the whole height of the floodwater? Is that, yeah, because?
Those things would happen, those things would happen in the area around the compressor that's affecting the flood flows, yes.
Back to the applications, flood plain development. Can you kind of give me a brief summary of what your review has found about this? Is the?
Sure, I, I, sorry, do you want to finish that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be clear about the sighting of the compressor station here.
The, I have the three main concerns associated with the modeling that I mentioned. That doesn't account for recent precipitation events, so it may be underestimating the flows. In a flood that we know from experience in the United States is very hard to predict. In the, in second case, they didn't account for the confluences, and they ought to have it, and they should have used the more sophisticated modeling. Now, that's what they did. In my view, sensitive facilities like compressors should not be constructed in floodways and in floodplains, because it's inducing an avoidable risk. And you're, you're far better off avoiding the risks, eliminating the risks by locating this compressor in the area that's not susceptible to flooding, and not susceptible to the mining risks that I talked about earlier, too.
I don't know, do you have, I guess, I guess you summed up your concerns reviewing the application materials in the geotech report, is there maybe anything you've left out, give you another crack at it? Risks that you believe might, might be posed by the construction of this particular proposed compressor station?
Yeah, I think, you know, with regard to the geotechnical report, I would add that it's, it's possible, and it ought to be done, to do a much more thorough evaluation of the mining risks, and if they're present. I can't tell from the mine maps, but there are investigations you can do to resolve that issue. I agree with them that the materials that they're using are dispersive when they contact water, when water contacts with these materials. And they've suggested placing a clay cap over top of the compressor foundation to prevent precipitation from entering. Well, that's not going to do anything for water that inundates that compressor foundation during a flood. That water's going to come from all directions, from the bottom up, and it's going to completely saturate that material. And that material, according to the geotechnical report, is, will lose strength and become dispersive when it contacts water. So that's when it becomes a risk of erosion, which is the main risk associated with the foundation of a compressor during a flood. So that design won't account for that. It won't provide a barrier to flood inundation and the strength loss. And, you know, the question is, why would, why would you use dispersive materials in a place that's on a flood plain? Why rely solely on a clay cap to prevent that from happening? That's not explained in the report, and it doesn't seem to be a very defensible position to me. With regard to the flooding, I won't reiterate my three concerns with the modeling, but will reiterate that sensitive structures, you know, we don't like to put them in harm's way for flooding for a couple of reasons. And the first is, obviously, the flood can induce dam damage, and damage to facilities that are dangerous is not a good thing. But the second reason is that if something were to go wrong during a flood, you want to have access to it. You know, that's why we don't put hospitals and things like that in floodplains, because during emergencies, we need to have access to it. Not because we can't build them to withstand the flood, it's because we need to have access to them. And, and that's why you don't put things like oil or gas facilities in floodplains, in my view.
Now, you've spoken a lot about the dispersive qualities of the proposed fill, which I understand to be mine spoils principally with a top layer of some type of gravel or limestone chips. I realize that, now, this thing is going to be five hundred feet long and a hundred and forty feet wide, so I certainly don't envision them pouring a gigantic concrete structure there of those dimensions, but is there some kind of other material, maybe, that perhaps might hold up a little better if floodwater came in on it, that you might use?
Yeah, well, you could, you could name more materials that aren't dispersive, for sure. You know, hard gravel foundation, like they would build a road out of. I still believe moving those structures out of the flood plain is the better option. In engineering, you know, the first, the first preference is always to eliminate the risk or avoid the risk, and then the later preference is to design around that risk. But if you were to design materials that were, or select materials that weren't dispersive, you would go to harder, common gravel.
You had mentioned that maybe some further investigation of underground mine, the Worded Mine was a really huge thing, and there were other mines around it on the other side of Gillespie Creek. And this mine is also an unwelcome neighbor, because, as you made a quick mention to, sometimes the water just bursts forth in vast torrents. So without, to investigate really more about this mine, but, forgive me, without poking a hole in it, is there some other kinds of techniques that could be used to get a good grasp of what this thing is sitting on or adjacent to?
There are two kind of mine. With regard to the underground mining, the geotechnical investigation drills just down at the top of the bedrock surface, you can drill into the bedrock and see if there's openings beneath the bedrock. But probably a better way to do it is to use geophysics. You can use something called ground penetrating radar to look into the ground. You can use various types of sound generating, geophysical instruments to see if there's underground openings. So it's a, it's a science that's reasonably well established.
So it sounds to me like what you're saying is flooding could be the gravest danger to this. I mean, is this the kind of thing where the, if we had, say, a two-hundred-and-fifty-year flood, it would just erode away the side of this pad, and the structure could tilt, collapse, break all the pipes that are operating the machinery?
Well, you're talking about a risk that ought to be addressed more thoroughly in the design, in my view, by more stringent design criteria, that you're talking about the risks. The risk is that the flood will induce erosion or induce the strength loss of this material that's supporting the foundation of it. And of course, if the foundation moves for a compressor, those red steel pipes come under stress. And at some point, they can't take the stress, so that's the concern.
Eric, this will be my last question. When you were looking at the precipitation history, did you, did you ever look at any forward projection of, you know, forward modeling of rainfall even in our entire area? I mean, some places obviously are very dry, but we're blessed with quite a lot of water, but perhaps too much.
No, I didn't, but I did recognize the trend, so the three highest rainfall events in the Pittsburgh area all occurred in the last twenty years. You know, they, there's, there's people that are attributed back to changing conditions and climate, but, you know, it also could be the lack of the draw. But my concern is that those high rainfall events weren't included in the record that was used by was used by the U.S. Army Corps to develop this flow, the base flow that was then modeled by Hyperion's consultants.
Okay, well, that's...
The answer to your question is no, I did not look at projections of weather.
Thank you. That sort of didn't sense it for me at this point.
Are you okay to do Ross? Just because he's a witness, or you want... Is your witness... I'll leave it up to you. Okay, Miss Condon, go ahead.
Yes. Who has retained you to testify here today, sir?
So I'm going to ask you to please speak slowly into the mic because, yeah, I'm getting a bad reverberation here, so...
Can we talk about... Okay. Is that better?
Much.
That's better.
Okay. Who has retained you to testify as an expert here today?
Well, I'm working through LISO, I believe I'd be there, and the formal contract with Environmental Integrity.
That'd be Lisa Graves, Mark Cucci, and the Environmental Integrity Project. Is that correct? I'm sorry, were you not able to hear me?
Yours.
Okay, I'll repeat it. Is that Lisa Graves, Mark Cucci, and the Environmental Integrity Project that you're under contract with for your testimony here today?
Did you say Mark Cucci?
Yes.
I've not heard of Mark Cucci.
Okay, Lisa. You're under contract, though, with Lisa from Environmental Integrity Project. Is that correct?
With Environmental Integrity. I'm not familiar with the project name at the end of it.
Okay. And you have done other work, other projects for Environmental Integrity?
Yes, I've worked on a project in Yukon, not very far away. Yukon, Pennsylvania, was a hazardous waste facility. And I did some work for them about a year and a half ago in Alabama.
And you've also done work for Earth Justice?
Have I done work for Earth Justice?
Yes.
Yes, I have.
And Environmental Justice Australia?
Environmental Justice Australia, I believe that's the same thing, or at least I'm answering it the same way. The work I did with Australia was with Earth Justice.
You've done work for Clean Water Action?
Clean Water Action, did you say?
Correct.
I don't recall that.
Environmental Law and Policy Center?
Environmental Law Policy Center?
And Policy Center.
I don't recall that.
Sierra Club?
Repeat that, please.
Sierra Club?
No.
Now, you are aware, or maybe I should say, are you aware that ENS, or Erosion and Sedimentation Issues in Pennsylvania with respect to oil and gas sites, are governed by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection?
I understand that the, I believe, I agree with you. They, there is a plan that was submitted to PAYDEP, and I suspect that's for their approval.
And are you also aware that the use of mine spoil soils or excavation of mine spoil soils falls also under the jurisdiction of, I'll use your words, PAYDEP?
I'm not aware that the use of the material comes under the jurisdiction of PAYDEP. No, I'm simply agreeing with the geotechnical consultant that it represents a risk that ought to be properly addressed.
But that wasn't my question, sir. My question was, are you aware that in Pennsylvania, erosion and sedimentation issues are governed by regulations and are subject to permit by PAYDEP or the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes, I thought I heard, I heard and answered that question before. I was aware that they had a erosion and sediment plan that was submitted to PAYDEP, as I understand, for PAYDEP's approval.
And before I go any further, at this point, I would just move to preclude this witness's testimony because I believe that it is governed by Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, not this board. To the extent he's testified about floodplain, as you may well be aware, there was a floodplain variance granted, and so that issue has already been determined, in fact, contrary to this witness's testimony at that proceeding.
Any response, Ms. Rosal?
Consider that the conditional use application in the previous hearing included many references to the floodplain issues, so really, this is something I believe is very relevant since, among other things, I'm a property owner within about 1,500 feet of the proposed site. And I do worry about potential flooding, backwater flooding on my property, and also the downstream, the people and flooding. I've seen flooding here. And I am concerned if this compressor station would be built in the floodplain, and I've always watched water trying to get to its floodplain, I've got some serious risks. So I really think this is valuable testimony with this, this is a key component.
Okay, the oral motion to preclude the witness is denied. Got any further questions?
I do. Quite a number, but I'll try to make it as short as I can. Have you ever reviewed ENS, or Erosion and Sedimentation Permit Application, other than for this site to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection?
I think I probably did. The... I did, I've done a fair amount of review work associated with groundwater contamination in Pennsylvania, and there were literally hundreds and hundreds of documents, but I suspect erosion and sediment plans, they were all regulated by PAYDEP, so I suspect a half.
Did you review the application for this particular erosion and sedimentation plan?
Yes, I reviewed it. I couldn't recite a chapter or verse to you, but I did review it and the attachments that were within it, yes.
Are you familiar with the current status before PAYDEP of that erosion and sedimentation application?
No, I'm not.
And we'll get to this a little more in a bit, but can I assume for that that you have not reviewed any supplemental materials that the company has provided to PAYDEP in connection with that application?
No, I haven't. I haven't seen anything in the materials that I've reviewed with respect to the erosion and sedimentation plan that would change any of the views that I've expressed to the group here tonight.
Right, but my question wasn't that. My question was, can I assume you've not seen any supplemental information that the company has submitted to PAYDEP in connection with its erosion and sedimentation plan application?
No, I have seen supplemental information. I believe as it pertained to the the mining in the area, there was a supplemental section on that. So I believe I've seen some of it. Whether I've seen all of it, of course, I don't know that.
Okay, I'll show you some of that in a bit, and you can tell me if you've seen it. Are you aware that in Pennsylvania, the PAYDEP district mining offices is responsible for issues surrounding abandoned mines?
I'm aware of their involvement in it, yes.
And have you been provided with any information about their involvement with respect to this particular site that you're here about tonight?
Limited to the information that I've expressed in the testimony tonight, the information that I've reviewed from that group.
Were you aware of any decisions or advice that the Mining Bureau gave with respect to this particular site?
No, I'm not.
Are you familiar with the Allegheny County Act 167, Countywide Stormwater Management Plan?
You'll have to take that a little slower, sorry, I'm getting a reverberation.
Sure. Are you familiar with the Allegheny County Act 167, Countywide Stormwater Management Plan?
I'm only familiar with the stormwater management plan that's submitted as part of this state application to the ESNR.
Are you familiar with PADEP's Management of Fill Policy?
Management of the?
Management of Fill Policy.
Did you say encroachment?
No, I'm sorry. Are you familiar with PADEP's Management of Fill, F-I-L-L, Policy?
No, I'm not.
Are you familiar with Pendot's Publication 293, Chapter 10, related to the handling of mine spoiled materials in construction?
I did review that document.
In connection with your review of this matter?
Yes, I believe it was, there was reference to it in one of the documents.
Are you familiar with the non-residential direct contact screening criteria for the screening parameters for historic fill in Pennsylvania?
No, I'm not.
You testified, did you not, in a proceeding before the Elizabeth Pudge of zoning hearing board on Hyperion's application for a floodplain variance with respect to this compressor station?
Well, in a hearing much like this, I was prepared to testify, but as soon as I was introduced, for some reason, the hearing was just terminated. So I couldn't offer my NY, but it was terminated.
But you did actually, at some point, give testimony, did you not, in that matter?
No.
I don't think the, we ever got to testify, and there was an attempt to swear me in. There was some discussion of qualifications, and within a very brief period of time, there was an argument that ensued, and then the Zoom meeting was terminated.
Were you aware that...
So I didn't testify on anything.
Were you aware that your report was entered into the record as Exhibit 2 in that proceeding?
I, I'm not, I wasn't aware, but I do know that I prepared that report, though, obviously.
And have you ever been provided with...
Mr. Regardis, I have an injection here. I attended that zoning hearing board in October, and it really was rather chaotic and unprofessional. And with all due respect, the hearing on the floodplain variance application was, again, a chaotic and somewhat unprofessional proceeding. It didn't really follow all the requirements for public hearings as mandated by the Pennsylvania MTC. And so...
Mr. Regardis?
He didn't, he didn't get an opportunity to really testify.
Yeah, I think that's not his answer, so I'm going to let Miss Condon explore that further if she wants.
Thank you. I'm handing out what we're going to mark as Exhibit I, which is a decision of the zoning hearing board on Hyperion's application for floodplain variance for 2340 Douglas Runge Road. And I don't know unless someone knows the way that we can do it, that I can display this for the witness, but I was going to read just a couple portions and ask him if he's been made aware of that. I think you might have been in the process of answering my question about this when we had the objection.
Objection? Should that decision be entered here? Not be, it shouldn't. It had a very narrow scope of the access road only, so not the compressor site itself.
No, that's, if you look at the decision, that's just not the case.
Are you offering this as an exhibit?
I am offering it as Exhibit I, yes.
Ms. Rosal, are you objecting?
I'm sorry?
Are you objecting to the admission of this document?
Yeah, just an intuible, please. Yeah, I'm just saying that that, that hearing was unprofessional, did not provide the opportunity for all the facts to be submitted for the record at that time. The decision to approve the floodplain variance was done hastily without any thoughtful deliberation. The very same night as the hearing was conducted, either the solicitor nor the board even attempted to give the appearance of fairness or desire to follow the long-established rules for public hearings in Pennsylvania. That was quite, again, it was strangely chaotic. And for these reasons, it's imperative that this board hears the experts' testimony because it provides factually based concerns for public health, safety, and welfare, and particularly those, for those families who might be forced to live next to this proposed industrial facility.
Yeah, I, Miss Condon, do you have a response?
Well, I was just going to simply say that this is the official decision, and it's my understanding it's not been appealed.
Yeah, so it's my, I'm going to admit it, and not, I understand what your objections are in terms of how the hearing process, but in terms of the relevance and the fact that it's an unappealed decision, I'm going to admit it's part of the record. Go ahead, Miss Condon.
And with apologies because of the remote transmission, I can't, I don't think I can show this to you. But were you ever made aware that the decision indicated on Page 4, and I quote, "The hydrologic and hydraulic analysis submitted with the application indicates a maximum water surface elevation increase of .27 of a foot per end, 3.24 inches per end, within the project area, and none at all outside the project area. The board considers this increase to be so small that it is insignificant, so the project complies with the requirements of sections 304D, 802A, and 802G of the ordinance that no floodplain variance be granted which would cause any increase in the base flood elevation." Were you ever made aware after the submission of your report of that?
Well, I heard what you told me there, and I did get some feedback from the people I'm working with as to what that decision was, but it doesn't change any of the things that I've said in this hearing tonight. The issues with the modeling remain, the issues with the potential underestimation of the rainfall event remains, the issue with the simplistic modeling remains, and I didn't consider any of the confluences. And I would add another thing, is that in the state of Pennsylvania, there's a mechanism for looking at a flood of record. That's something that is required for some other sensitive facilities, and that it ought to be applied here, and I'll explain it. Rather than solely looking at historical modeling results in the FEMA maps... Rather than solely looking at historical modeling results in the FEMA maps, the state for sensitive facilities, like hazardous waste facilities, requires the proponent to look at the flood of record, which being the highest level that's been experienced. And in my view, that's what the consultants ought to have done. They ought to have consulted with the local residents to consider what had happened during the floods that were in 2018 and potentially in 2015. They ought to have looked at the evidence in the photographs, and also the floods leave behind evidence of how high and how fast they were.
Sir, and-
They ought to have done those things to determine whether there was damage. Now, um-
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll present that it takes the blocks to turn the block, and I-
Hold on, hold on, one at a time, hold on. Tim's gonna stroke out here.
So, my simple-
Hold on, sir, hold on. Just if you can, both, both, you can only have one person talking at a time. So, Miss Connaught, please either ask your question, or Mr. Johnson, finish your answer. I'm not sure what you want of it.
So, I had asked a simple question, which is whether he had been made aware of this quote from the decision. And he answered that, and then has gone into affirmative testimony. I let him go for a while, but I'm not sure how long we're going with this. I mean, if, if we wanna do redirect, if they wanna do redirect on some subcenter point, fine, but he answered my question, which is my only question. Um, were you also-
Can I explain what, can I explain what I was trying to say in the context of that question?
I don't think she's interested in a further answer, but I'll leave up the Miss Connaught.
Yeah, my only question, sir, is whether you had been made aware of that quote that I gave you that was in the board's decision. That was my only question at that point, and-
So, the reason for the long-winded answer is because in that question, you quoted the results of modeling that were relied upon-
Right, not in hand, just in-
-as part of that decision, and, and I was just reminding you that there are some significant uncertainties associated with that modeling, and they could result in underrepresentation of those numbers that you just quoted.
Were you informed that after the submission of your report, the board on page five found, "None of the evidence presented by opponents to the floodplain variance negates the satisfaction of ordinance required by the applicant. The report of Gordon J. Johnson, the president of Burgess Environmental, entered into the record as Exhibit 2, is based on the misunderstanding that the compressor building will be located within an identified floodplain area, when in reality, none of the compressor buildings and very little of the compressor pla, compressor pack will lie within the floodplain. Most of the report is devoted to general comments about the purported flood hazards of the proposed facility with suggestions that higher standards than those contained in the ordinance be applied." Were you provided with information, and this is all I'm asking, not what your testimony is here today, were you provided with information after the board's decision that that was its finding with respect to your report?
Well, I was not provided with what you just quoted me, but I would add that I, I don't agree with it. Sorry, I have the-
I understand you don't agree.
My understanding that the-
I would move this right in.
-foundation for this facility will be in the flood zone. It's influencing the flood levels, and it's influencing the flood velocity. So, I, I don't understand the basis of what you just quoted, but to answer your question, I was not provided with that document that you just read to me.
Thank you. I am now going to-
Could, could I just quickly object here to one thing? At, at that meeting at which Mr. Johnson wasn't allowed to testify, his report was actually refused, and yet now here it's showing up as, you know, the end of all of this. I don't understand, that seems quite contradictory to happen.
So, yeah, I don't think there's an objection there. I do understand what you're saying. You can certainly ask him that on redirect.
Okay, I'm sorry.
To clarify that point. That's okay. I'm trying to give you some leeway with it, so on redirect, you can ask him that.
At this point, I'm going to hand out Exhibit J, and we do have, I think, the ability to show, there we go. Okay, I think we do have the ability to show Mr. Johnson.
Because I think Tim's probably gonna be needing a break.
Okay.
Do you have a while? A little bit?
Fifteen, twenty.
Okay, one little bit of break. Mr. Johnson, can you hang on online? The court quarters is gonna need a little bit of a break here. So, we're gonna take maybe a ten-minute or less break. Is that okay? Can you hang on a minute?
That's fine with me, no.
Okay, so just hang tight, sir. Okay, we'll recess for ten minutes. Okay, we're back on the record.
Yeah, I handed around Exhibit J, which is an August 22, 2022 letter from CEC to Jeffrey Ridenbaugh, environmental engineering specialist, Pennsylvania DEP. And have up on the screen, hopefully so Mr. Johnson can see it, the first page of this that I wanna turn attention to. And first of all, just to set the stage for this, this is one of the pieces of supplemental information provided by the applicant to Pennsylvania DEP in supplement for its erosion and sedimentation permit application. And that I had asked you if you had seen, and I think you indicated that you had not seen supplemental materials. So, can I assume that you have not seen the August 22, 2022 letter with material, supplemental materials?
I believe I've seen this.
And how was it provided to you, if you know?
It was provided recently, to the folks who are working with me there in the room. It was probably the last few days.
So-
The reason why I'm hesitating is that, that I did see supplemental information. I don't know if this is exactly it, in the interest of time. I don't think you want me to go through my, my documents to see if this is it, but I do recall them providing supplemental information on the potential acid rock drainage, which is the subject of that paragraph you're joining.
Okay, and there are some other paragraphs, there's a lot of materials here. We're just gonna look at a couple of them. And so, with respect to page six, paragraph- Um, and so with respect to page six, um, paragraph nine, which actually starts on page five. Um, were you aware from your review of these materials that the C E C contacted at Paydeck's request, the New Stanton District Mining Office regarding this project? And then also the Bureau of Abandoned Mines, uh, Reclamation?
Yes, and I believe I did, uh, discuss that in my, uh, primary testimony. That, um, when I was asked, um, did they provide information about the mining in their application, I said there was a passing reference to it in the conditional use application. Uh, there was also some discussion on the issue in, uh, their responses to the E S N R request. I don't know if I specifically said that, that that's what I was referring to.
Okay.
So I did see that, um, it's, it's still concerning, just to finish my answer. Um, my, my concern isn't that there is a document that shows that mining, uh, did not occur underneath the compressor site. My concern is that there's conflicting documents. And that because there's conflicting documents, I do not believe that this should be based solely on the document review. But they should actually do site specific analysis to see if, uh, there was actually mining there. And those techniques are available and they're effective. And, and that's my view, that because the state documents are conflicting, I don't know which one's correct. Uh, they ought to do more detailed evaluation. And that's not because they're putting in a trivial facility, they're putting in a very sensitive and potentially dangerous facility.
Are, are you aware that, um, C E C relied upon a report from a professional engineer in coal mining with years of experience with console energy? Specifically Warren Merritt with respect to whether there was prior mining at this site?
I, I did not see that document. But I, I would just reiterate that, uh, there are actual investigative methods that are effective. Um, and would appear to be warranted in this case, given the sensitivity of the structure.
And again, um, are you aware of whether Pennsylvania D E P, who governs the issuance of the erosion and sedimentation plan permit, required, uh, any additional valuation?
I'm, I'm not aware of whether they are required, and I'm just giving you my opinion and the reasons for my opinion.
If we can take a look at, um, same page, we have up there page six, um, item eleven. It says, because the Allegheny County Act one sixty seven countywide stormwater management plan indicates that to meet water quality goals, disturbance to floodplain should be minimized. Please demonstrate how the proposed champion compressor station has minimized disturbance to floodplain. That, of course, being D E P's question. And then if we go to page seven, um, there's a discussion about why, and very similar in fact to the, I think, discussion in the floodplain variance to, um, why that's not an issue. I know you don't agree with that, sir, but were you, uh, was this information made available to you? Um, specifically D E P's question and, um, the company's answer to D E P and the supplemental information?
I, I did see that they responded to it, I believe that's your question.
Yes.
And I, and I would, you know, agree with what you just said, that I, I, I don't agree with that, because of the basis of modeling.
And, um, did you leave that? Okay, I think we've also hinted out exhibit K, which is a December nine, twenty twenty two, um, supplemental, um, filing made by the company with D E P. Uh, can you tell us whether you're aware of this particular supplemental filing?
Maybe to read it.
Sure. Would it be helpful if, um, if Ryan went to the first page of it? Just for identification.
Uh, no, probably just leave it there, so I can read it, because that's what I'll remember. I've not seen this.
Okay, and, um, with respect to page two, paragraph one, there's, um, questions being asked, uh, to the company by P A D E P with respect to whether they met the clean fill and site contamination requirements for the E N S individual permit. And, um, we see under the response, um, they collect, the company collected through C E C and submitted to P A D E P, uh, additional soil samples, um, to demonstrate compliance with the, uh, fill requirements of the regulations. You see that?
I, I do see that. My concern, um, with regards to this issue of the soil sampling and the, and the, uh, geotechnical report, uh, wasn't that their sampling was somehow deficient. Uh, my concern was that they identified a risk, the dispersive materials, uh, and a remedy, capting the site, uh, that would be effective for precipitation, but would not be effective for flooding inundation. So my concern isn't with their, their sampling.
And are you saying, sir, that you don't believe that P A D E P has exercised appropriate due diligence in, um, evaluating the erosion sedimentation permit application in this?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that the clay cap that's being proposed, uh, will be effective at reducing precipitation infiltration, but that clay cap won't be effective, uh, uh, an effective barrier for flood inundation. That's what I'm saying.
And therefore, if P A D E P has not required further investigation around the floodplain, um, can I take it it's your opinion that, that they're not exercising appropriate due diligence here with respect to the E N S permit application?
No, um, no, that's not how I'm saying. Um, uh, I, I don't know from this one page snippet whether, uh, the, the, uh, Paydeck was concerned about the issues that I'm talking about.
Do you know?
I can't tell, uh, from reading this document, whether they're concerned about that or some other issue.
And, um, do you know anything about the current status of the, uh, E N S permit application with P A D E P?
Uh, I, I don't know the status of that permit application.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Ms. Roslin, any redirect?
Uh, yeah, yes, I do. Um, uh, do, uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, do you have a report prepared here for tonight?
Uh, yes, I do. For thi- for this hearing tonight?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I do.
Um, yeah. And, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry about that. Um, is it similar to the report that you attempted, uh, to present to the zoning board?
Uh, from, in the context of the, uh, flood issues and my concerns about the flood issues, it is. Um, at that point in time, um, I had not had the opportunity to review the geotechnical report. Um, and, and as I understood it, the geotechnical aspects weren't part of that hearing. Uh, but the issues related to the flood risks and the flood modeling that I discussed here tonight, uh, I presented them in a similar manner in the past report, maybe not chapter verse. I think when we look at things again, we do some editing, but nothing of substance presented.
Um, I'd, I'd like to introduce this, um, report to all of those exhibit, I think, R four? Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, I, I've not been saying about procedure when I say this, um, obviously that should have been introduced. In the case of cheating, I should have had the ability to cross, review it and cross examine on it. So, um, you know, I can, I can try to look at it quickly now, but we had a break, it would have been nice if I at least had it during that break.
What do you want to make? Um, ma'am, I have a job here on the matter of procedure, but she sent me out copies and I haven't received any. Is there only one copy to be given to the backers? Do they have copies that need to be?
About this report?
From, from.
I think she kind of minds it.
Oh, these exhibits here?
Yeah.
You have them? Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go. Then, uh, John, I don't know, Mr. Johnson, are there any highlights you want to touch on now that everyone has got the, got a copy before them?
I'm gonna just.
Sorry, you have a question?
Mr. Johnson, hold on a second, just for clarification of the record. I'm gonna withhold any, uh, decision on the admission of this report until Ms. Conda has a chance to read it. Um, and see what it says, that way she can address any issues that are in there. But you can certainly ask him another question while she's, you know, I.
Um, I just, uh, wanted to ask you if you wanted to mention any highlights now that everyone has, has got, I mean, a copy of your report?
Boy, I didn't catch part of any of that.
Oh. Did you, would you like to mention any highlights, um, of your report?
No, I, I think, uh, if you're asking me if I want to mention any highlights of the report, did I, did I hear that?
Yes.
I, no, I, at the interest of time, I think I've, um, I've described my primary concerns, um, their concerns with respect to flood issues that I had, uh, prior to that, uh, flood variance, uh, hearing. And they remain the same. We should all get the same microphone, the chairman has to, it's perfect.
I just, um, yeah, I did want to say that, um, Mr. Johnson's, um, testimony, um, was refused during the zoning hearing, or as was, is reported, was not accepted. And yet, um, it ended up somehow as, uh, part of the decision of the, of the zoning board. Just wanted to, you know, enter that, please.
Ms. Conda, do you have any response to the, uh, to the report itself?
So from a quick review of the report, it, it appears that the witness has covered the substance of it in his testimony. Uh, and therefore, I cross examined on, you know, necessarily relevant.
Any objections to the admission as exhibit?
I, I don't, I, I do need to address for the record, though, um, the board decision in the floodplain variance very clearly reads the report of Gordon Johnson entered into the record as exhibit two. So although he may not have testified, uh, at that, his report was entered. I think he's testified here today that his substance, sum and substance is floodplain related, um, issues were in that report. And obviously were rejected, uh, by the zoning hearing board. So I do not object to the introduction of this, but I believe that any opinions with respect to the floodplain, uh, have already been dealt with.
Okay, I would admit this as Roslin.
Or, or?
Or.
Mr., uh, I wanted to ask Mr. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, uh, it's just if, uh, Mr. Johnson, you recall at any point if your first effort to submit a report was accepted?
I, I, I didn't know that the report was accepted in the flood variance hearing, is that the question I was asked?
Yes.
Um, the, yeah, I didn't know that was, uh, that was accepted. Uh, the only thing I know is that at the very beginning, first few words of, uh, the questions that I was going to get, um, that the hearing was interrupted and, and terminated.
Thank you.
Ms. Conda, anything else for this witness?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other parties, Ms. Bartic, any questions for this witness?
No.
Does Miss Kovich any questions for this witness? Okay, thank you, sir, thank you for testimony.
Thank you.
Uh, you're, excuse me, from labor?
You are excused, sir, unless you want to stick around, it's up to you.
Can we ask them a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what?
Before you leave.
I'm so sorry, yeah, that is definitely my fault. Any questions from the commissioners for this witness?
I do, sorry, yes.
Sorry. So with the, the ground being prepared, are you familiar with how it will be prepared to put the, the compressors on it?
Yes.
Okay. Over time, could there, with the best of your ability to answer this, could that ground settle at all?
Um, in my view, uh, I'll give you a little bit of a ball dancer, but in my view, if there are no underground mine openings, and if the inundation by flooding does not occur, then there's a low risk of that happening, a very low risk of that happening. Um, that changes for the reasons I mentioned before, if there is a significant flood where you can get erosion. Um, and, uh, it changes if there are underground mining works, and it doesn't have to be just an underground mine. It could be the, uh, water conveyance systems or air circulation systems that are associated with those underground mines. Uh, if, if they're present, then, then I would say there is a risk that's not acceptable.
So with the equipment that's on there, the vibration or anything like that, could that promote settling or not?
Only under the conditions that I mentioned.
Okay. Sorry. Any other question? Yes, Mr. Campus.
Hello? My question is with your, um, just the drawings that you saw and the water movement around the compressor building. The, did your drawing contain elevations?
So you were cutting it in there, I'm sorry, Mr.
No, um, the, the drawings that you referenced from the compressor station, did they contain elevations?
The drawings of the compressor station? Yes, they contained elevations.
The, how was the elevations in relation to the other buildings, I guess, below that? Below the, uh, farther down the creek, creek or house?
Well, if, I don't know the elevations of the buildings further down the creek that aren't related to the compressor station. I think, uh, my recollection is, is that the compressor itself was substantially higher than the predicted, uh, flood level.
Okay, so.
Did that respond to your question?
Kind of, in the case of a flood, the buildings below downstream of the compressor station would be affected before the compressor station?
Uh, without knowing them, uh, I, I can't answer exactly, but my suspicion would be that the, the buildings themselves, uh, the houses and why not, would be at greater risk than the compressor, uh, flood inundation.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, uh, based on those responses, any other questions from the parties or the applicant? Does Conda have any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, you are now excused again, sorry for the false alarm, the person, you are, you are having a good night, everybody. All right, thank you, all right, bye. Okay, uh, Ms. Roslin, you have a witness?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, I'd like to introduce Kathy Anderson as a late witness. Please, Kathy.
Mr. Johnson, are there going to be any more patches per?
I don't believe so, I think, are we done? I don't believe so, I think, are we done with experts? Ms. Roslin?
As far as I'm concerned, yes. Yes.
Expert, any more experts? Okay, so we're done, we're done with experts.
Okay, thank you.
And could you state your name? Kathy Anders, Anderson. And, uh, where do you live? I live at twenty-nine hundred Schwerian, S-C-H-W-I-R-I-A-N Drive, listed at one five three seven. How long have you lived there?
Um, twenty-three years.
Do you own the property?
Yes.
Um, do you know how long this property has been in the family?
Yes, um, a long time, since nineteen thirteen. It was originally the Forest Hill Dairy.
Oh, very good. Now, do you have firsthand experience with erosion and sedimentation problems caused in this case by Humley and Humley, which is the anti-seeding company of Olympus, like, you're in?
Yes.
I'd like Kathy Anderson to be accepted as a late witness.
You don't need to do that.
I don't, oh, okay, thank you, sorry. Can, can you tell us what happened and why it occurred? I understand, uh, that you have some photographs, if, um, yeah.
Um, I also have, um, um-
A violation report to copies of that?
Yes. Okay, um, uh, just to give you some background, um, our family farm, my husband's family farm is located at the top of Forest Hill Road. It's about a hundred and fifty acre farm, and it, it spans between Forest Hill Road and Waddle Road. The Apalobe Pipeline, um, crosses our property at the top of Forest Hill Road. It extends up over the top of Forest Hill, and then it goes down Forest Hill to Waddle Road. I think, um, the best way to explain it would be to hand out a copy of the, um, Pennsylvania, um, DEP violation report. Um, is that okay, if I do that?
Why don't you show, show the hot rod now? Pass them on.
Exhibit five?
And her one.
Anderson one.
No.
Or should it be Roslin five? Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Butler, can, can you cue up the first? Yeah, can you, there we go.
Ms. Lucas, any objection?
Yeah, um, we don't have the objection to extend this witness as first in knowledge of whatever is being described in this. We do object to his report because prepared by a third party, if not here, then we can't cross-examine it. And we raised this issue before and-
I'm sorry, what report are you?
The, the surface activities inspection report, the, uh, again, if, if this witness has firsthand knowledge, testified about certain matters, it's fine. But this document was prepared by an individual, um, who's not here, and we can't cross-examine it, and we-
This is public record, I don't, uh-
Our's online.
This is a public record on the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection side, correct?
Yeah.
I understand that, but it's still, uh, hearsay.
I understand, I understand your argument, but I'm gonna overrule your objection and proceed.
Okay. The first three pages of this report kind of detail the violation, the violations themselves. Um, in the middle of the first page in the remarks, if you read that section, you can pretty easily understand what they're talking about. Um, the last pages are photos, and they're, they're hard to, um, interpret if you don't know what they're looking at. So, I brought some photos along. Unfortunately, they're non-ordered, so we're gonna have to play around with it, um. Let's see, Greg, could you, um, go to?
For a better view.
These are photos which I took, um, along about, um, within about six weeks of the Pennsylvania DEP visit, which was, um, in early July of two thousand nineteen. So, I just brought the photos because they, they more easily can show what's on these photos, but again, you know, they're not the exact same photos. These were taken by the DEP, these were taken by, um, so, um, uh, we, when, um, this pipeline construction began, um, in the spring of two thousand nineteen, um, my husband and I started taking pictures of it, mostly because we walk on our farm every day. And up at the top of Forest Hill Road, we can see the entirety of the pipeline, the part that goes down to Forest Hill and the part that goes down to Waddle Road. And we noticed in May that, um, this was starting to happen. Um, that photo was taken in June, but it, it basically is what the thing looked like. And, um, you know, most of you probably know this, but we, you know, when they do a pipeline, they cut down the trees, they strip off the vegetation, and then they take the to- layer of topsoil off and they pile it on one side of the pipeline so they can work on the other side. And it was probably in that work, in that, in that, um, particular thing, the scraping off of the topsoil. And also, it seemed like they decided to dig into the side of the hill and sort of level it a bit, and they dug into an underwater, um, an underground stream, and it's from Florida. And, um, that's what we have. This is, this is in a field in which there has never been any surface water. Um, so now, we have this, there is a, um, a, um, fill sock along, um, one side of the right-of-way, and that fill sock was inundated and, and overflowed, um, right-of-way. So, in, probably in late May, mid-May, late May, June, I started talking to the, the folks who were working on the pipeline about this and asking them, you know, what would be done about it, how could be fixed? And, um, what ended up happening was, um, let's see, next photo we're gonna, um, we need. Oh, no, that's on, that's on, yeah, that's, that's, should be, that's, okay. Um, so, so what ended up happening was, um, uh, the company put in more filter socks. They also, you can see there's a Porter Road now up above the Boggy Sunkie Urdale. And the, the stream just flowed underneath that Porter Road, and it, um, you can tell if you're looking at that picture that the water came under the filter socks, it came through the filter socks, and sometimes it came over top of the filter socks. Um, so, um, that's kind of what happened there. So, I believe, um, I also started calling, um, Humley and Humley at the time, um, and, um, we didn't get much response. And I think that had to do with the fact that the, I think I called land managers or something like that. These folks were, um, one person left, another person came in, and it just sort of nothing happened. So, um, at some point, um, I believe it was late in June, I called the DEP. And, uh, they, I spoke with this person who wrote this report, Eric Norman, and they came out and they did their inspection. Um, so, Greg, can you find that video? If you can find the video, see if you can now, Justin, that'd be great, if you can find it. So, this is, um, the bend of right-of-way. That's, that's okay, I'll just describe it to you. Anyway, that, that's the bend of right-of-way, I'll talk about that picture, but in the video that I brought in, um, the water created a stream about, um, four or five feet wide, it went downhill into a valley, um, below the right-of-way, and it, um, crossed over my neighbor's backyard fence, went down around to the front of his house in this pond in there. And he has a, he has a new bar for rocks there, and that took up the entire, um, area in front of his house for, oh, that, I think of that for a few seconds. Um, so then, um, that was a problem. So, then, we, uh, the DEP came out, and, um, the DEP identified the violations, which had to do with, um, apparently incorrect installation of water bars, um, with, um, filter socks not being placed in the right places at the right time. And if you look at that photo, this was, um, after the DEP came. And what ended up happening was they changed the filter sock business, and then they put filter socks across the right-of-way, um, to keep, to prevent water from going into the channel. But they'd already cut a pretty huge channel through there, and that went about four or five hundred feet down to the bottom of our hill. Um, and the, the channel's still there, of course. Um, so, um, I'm supposed to be talking about violations, right? So, but I said, that's what this is about.
Use my microphone, Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Um, uh, somebody in some hearing, and I think it was somebody from Olympus said that violations are easily fixed and not a big deal. And it, um, it's very problematic because this is a violation and it, it is a problem. Um, as Eric Norman told me, the water's probably pyridic, which means it's acidic, um, and-
An objection on your-
I know, it says possible, I know that, and what he told me was that we're not gonna test it, but that's what he wrote. So, he says that on the report. So, um, the issue for me is it, it, um, it disturbed the land, it created a lot of hassles for my neighbors who live on our farm. And, but the biggest problem is it has disturbed the structure of the soil, and it has changed, um, that part of our farm forever. Um, did Olympus do stuff to fix it? Yes, they put in the correct kind of water bars, apparently, um, they put in more of them, they put in filter socks. They, um, I think they put in some fill material, um, but that doesn't, you can't put the land back together once you disturb it. So, and it's now kind of a bummer, um, it doesn't, it doesn't go back. So, um, that's, that's pretty much all I can say.
And how, how long did it take to, to get this, including, or something?
Yes, but that- Um, the, the report is dated, I believe, July ninth, or is it July ninth, I think? And it was shortly after that, that, um, that Olympus came out and, and worked on the thing and put in extra filter socks. And eventually, that summer, they put in new water bars, and they, they covered it up, you know, which, which is, with the main thing that fixed it, so.
And maybe still have a little bit of residual problem in terms of-
Yeah, we have a little bit of swamp, yes.
Now you have the swamp?
Yeah.
Is this what they called officially an erosion and sedimentation violation?
I believe so.
Very good. Um, yeah, I don't really have any other, other questions, um.
Ms. Lucas?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Oh, also, questions, sorry.
I just like to ask everyone a question. So, you had said that you had tried to contact them to get something remediated?
Yeah.
Did that attempt happen and be prior to calling the DEP?
I, I attempted to call them prior to-
Was there any resolve prior to that?
No, no, there wasn't, but I think there was a change in, um, employees or something like that.
So, at that time, was there that number that we talked about in prior meetings to call if you had an issue?
No, I didn't do that. I, I called the guy who, um, and I also left a message at their main number in Kansford, or wherever it is, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't, it's not an emergency, it's not something to blow it up.
I have a question. Um, were you trying to reach out to a specific individual?
Yes, the person who-
And then that person was no longer there, so you were calling their office?
I, I think so, I'm not sure.
And they were no longer there?
Yeah, he didn't tell me he was leaving, but, um, a couple of weeks later, somebody else called me.
Yeah, okay. I don't have any questions. Any else from commissioners?
I have a question. His name, I know. Caitlin, where is it? Um, the person that you tried to contact, is that who you were told to contact by Olympus? Like, when you reached out to them, and how did you know that that's who you were supposed to get in contact with? The person who maybe didn't have-
The reason I knew that is-
One of the topics, sorry.
Okay. Um, he is the person that we contacted for everything that had to do with Olympus, so I assumed he was the person to contact.
Okay. And just like, how did you feel when this happened? And like, you walked the farm and looked at this?
Pissed.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Stuff happens, we, uh, when we dig into the side of a mountain in western Pennsylvania, a lot of times you're gonna get water.
Yeah, did you feel concerned, like, that maybe it couldn't be fixed, or wouldn't, like, were you worried, like, stressed?
Yes.
Okay.
All due above.
No, for the last, all due above.
Yeah, yeah, it's our farm.
Any other questions for this witness? Okay, thank you, Ms. Camps. Okay, so, at this time, I think we're gonna, um, continue this hearing until March thirtieth at seven o'clock. My understanding, there will be no more witnesses. I think I'm gonna give each party, um, a brief time to do a summary argument if they want, if the parties can certainly present their own testimony to have that opportunity, and then-
We, we absolutely agree with what we have any rebuttal testimony, pardon me?
Uh, Olympus, or, I very, very value it, one percent any rebuttal testimony from all we heard tonight.
Again, I, I did have some, um, material for the, for the- Again, I, I did have some material for the, for the next meeting. Did I hear you say there was some limitation or?
You were going to, you said you wanted to present your own.
Yes, yes, yes.
You'll have that opportunity.
Okay, okay, fine.
Yeah.
With a valid time restriction, I think.
Trying to figure out the date. Can we go off the record here?
That's what I was looking at, yeah. Because that's like a fifth, it's like a fifth day as long as, I mean, it's one of those days, like, a fifth day. I have them all every other day, but I want to look at them around.
April 4th, does that work for anybody?
I might be able to, so like, I actually like, in fact, I have.
Wait for everybody here to be here. This is about a, a big installation here.
I'm pretty shot by, you're like, all of your marks are shot.
Did you shoot Brian or Rico?
That's our movie, right? We may reschedule the meeting.
Because Brian and Rico are trading.
Oh, really?
Do you know my name?
That name, that name's.
That's an arid one, huh?
I used to run around here.
I can't do that too well.